Counselor Jones.
Here.
Counselor Geisler.
Here.
Counselor Jelly.
Here.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Here.
Mayor Boucher.
Here.
Any counselor have announcements that they'd like to give this evening? Anyone? Hey, we have a public hearing on the truth in taxation for next year's property tax levy. Mr. Mulder.
So tonight is the public hearing for the 2025 budget and levy. Notices were mailed out by St. Louis County. We held our preliminary budget meeting back in September. The proposed levy is nine million four hundred and eight thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars. Of that, eight million eight hundred ninety-one thousand and seventeen dollars is going to the general fund. The rest is going to debt service, PETA, and some of our abatement projects. Sorry, I misspoke. I gotta get back to that. It's eight million two hundred and eighty-four thousand is going to the general fund for the taxes. The total levy for the city is nine point four million. But tonight, people have opportunity to speak to the budget and to the tax levy. The city council does not need to take action tonight, but you would need to approve it before the end of the year, which would mean you could wait two weeks if you wanted to.
Thank you. Is there anyone present or online that wishes to speak to us about the truth in taxation hearing? Or the tax levy for 2025 and the budget for 2025? Is there anyone online, Mr. Mulder, that we can see?
I don't have that.
We do have one online and they can raise their hand whenever or just unmute and start with their name and address. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So either anyone online or in chambers, if you wish to address the proposed tax levy or next year's budget, please start with your name and address. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council about next year's property tax levy or general fund city budget? We will close the public discussion and we have four resolutions in front of us. First is 2024 dash two twenty-nine. Resolution adopting the final 2024 property tax levy collectible in 2025 in the amount of nine million four hundred eight thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars. Is there a motion?
Well, since we had no one speak on it tonight, I would motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution 2024 dash two thirty, resolution adopting the final 2025 city general fund budget in the amount of eight million eight hundred ninety-one thousand seventeen dollars and the overall budget of twenty-five million eight hundred seventy-eight thousand four hundred two dollars. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Jelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution 2024 dash thirty-one. Resolution authorizing the hire of two additional police officers in 2025. This would take place in the third quarter 2025. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution 2024 dash two thirty-two. Resolution authorizing the hiring of a full-time administrative assistant in 2025. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Nay.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Nay.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. We have no communications to be dealt with this evening. There are some that are on file. Public discussion, this is the time that anyone can address the council about any item not on the agenda. We ask that you limit your time to three minutes per person. If anyone wishes to address the council, please start with your name and address.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. We will forward that information to our city engineer. We'll forward your comments about the soft spots to the city engineer. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the council under general public discussion? Does anyone else wish to speak about in general public discussion? Hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda, which includes minutes, approval or correction of November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four city council continuation minutes and accounts payable, approved general city warrants from November sixteenth, twenty twenty-four through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of one million four hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones. Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next, we have city ordinances, second reading of ordinance 2024 dash ten. An ordinance of the city of Hermantown amending and restating four oh five, section four oh five, sale of tetrahydrocannabinol products to regulate cannabis business. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder?
Maybe we could have Mr. Johnson.
Great, thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to start off that a public hearing, as you'd mentioned, this is the second reading for this. A public hearing was held at the Planning and Zoning Commission at the November nineteenth meeting. There were no members of the public in attendance. However, there was a quite a bit of conversation from the planning and zoning, asking various questions associated with the these two ordinances. At the end, they did recommend approval as written, as we're going to be seeing here this evening. So this first ordinance has to do with section four oh five. And what this does is generally address the nature of the businesses and sale of the THC products that way. What it does is establishes fees and license requirements associated with that. It limits the number of the cannabis retail businesses in the city of Hermantown to one for twelve thousand five hundred residents. This creates buffers associated with different uses, i.e. school, daycares, residential treatment facilities, playgrounds, parks, or other cannabis retail type businesses. That establishes what districts that this operations can happen in, as well as hours of operation. Lastly, it does get into regulation of low potency hemp edibles as well. Once again, it can only be sold to people twenty-one or older and can basically have to be sold behind the counter type of activity that way. As I mentioned, planning and zoning concurred with the council that we're looking at more of a conservative approach as this starts to come on board from the city's standpoint, with the knowledge that this could be addressed at a future date if it wants to be revisited then.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council?
I just have one clarifier. In the application submittal, it says to be included is a copy of a valid state license or a written notice of preapproval. But then they have to go to the state to get approval after getting our approval?
So when I looked at Gunner Johnson too, I will start with that. So the initial process, how this works is an application would be made to the city. And then once that it is determined that the operation meets the city requirements, particularly i.e. zoning districts, et cetera, that way, then that applicant would go to the state, secure their licensing, and then come back to the city for that final approval process that way.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on these ordinance? Any public questions to speak to us, please start with your name and address. Is there any public input on ordinance two, two thousand twenty-four dash ten? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is the second reading of ordinance 2024 dash eleven. An ordinance amending chapter two, section two hundred definitions in chapter five, land use regulations to regulate cannabis businesses. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. Do we need any more of an explanation than we got for the last one?
Maybe the only thing I'll add is the particular uses, i.e. cultivation, transportation, retail businesses, et cetera. Those would require proper zoning districts as well as a special use permit. So there'd be a public hearing held at a planning and zoning commission and then with that action ultimately going before city council for their action at that point.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this ordinance? Any public input on the second reading of ordinance 2024 dash eleven? Any public input on the ordinance amending chapter two, section two hundred? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next, we have resolutions, resolution 2024 dash two thirty-three. Resolution approving ARPA fund usage. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Mr. Mulder?
So the city received just over a million dollars in ARPA funds from the federal government. We've used those for various fire department, administrative facility, King Creek, police body cams, comprehensive plan, broadband studies. So we've used it for lots of purposes. We spent nine hundred and twenty thousand of that. Before the end of the year, we need to designate how we're going to spend the remaining amount. We have forty-seven expected to be spent on the comprehensive plan in process. And then the last estimated eighty-five thousand, we're recommending that that be applied to Pickner Field improvements.
Thank you. Do I have any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the resolution approving ARPA fund usage? Is there any public input on resolution 2024 dash two thirty-three? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution 2024 dash two thirty-four, resolution adopting assessment role for delinquent utility charges for 2024. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder?
This is an annual thing that we do with unpaid utility amounts. And so in the past, we had a a proposed to assess like delinquent water and sewer bills, but we now do that through the shut-off process. So these are the unpaid stormwater utility fees. So these residents haven't paid their stormwater utility fees. So we're proposing that they would be assessed on their property taxes.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council?
Does this admin fee go to the county or stay with the city?
The county keeps.
Both. Part goes to county and part of the city keeps.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution 2024 dash two forty-two? I'm sorry, two thirty-four. Last opportunity for public input on the adoption of assessment role for delinquent utility charges. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor, excuse me, Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution 2024 dash two thirty-five, resolution approving final pay request to White and Company Incorporated for water main replacement project along Trunk Highway fifty-three between Airport Road and Sears Drive in the amount of one hundred fifty-four thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars and fifty-six cents. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Mr. Mulder?
So this is just the work that was done to replace a water main along Highway fifty-three that you had previously approved.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the resolution approving final pay request to White and Company for a water mine, water main replacement project? Is there any public input on resolution 2024 dash two thirty-five? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution 2024 dash two thirty-six. Resolution approving pay request number seven for road improvement district number five forty-one and five forty-two to Northland Constructors in the amount of one hundred thirty-two thousand twenty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. Does anyone have a motion relating to this item?
Motion to table to wait for some additional information regarding change orders.
That would be two weeks?
Table for two weeks.
Motion by Counselor Geisler to table for two weeks. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Next is resolution 2024 dash two thirty-seven. Resolution approving general fund grant agreement, construction grant for Hermantown Ice Arena project between the city of Hermantown and the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development. Do we have a motion? Motion by Counselor Jones to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder?
As you recall, the state did approve a capital improvement request of seven point four million dollars for the ice arena. This is that grant agreement that we need to enter into the state in order to receive that money. It requires some conditions for us that we need to make to meet and then we can get paid during the construction process.
Thank you. Are there any questions and comments from council?
Is the effective date the June second of twenty twenty-three? Is that the date they passed the grant?
I believe it is.
Any other questions or comments? Is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on this resolution, grant agreement, construction grant for the Hermantown Ice Arena project? Is there any public input on resolution 2024 dash two thirty-seven? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution 2024 dash two thirty-eight. Resolution awarding contract for security cameras and network hardware for the North Star Ford Arena to Site On Computer Corporation in the amount of forty-five thousand five hundred thirteen dollars and twenty-three cents. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler to approve. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Jones. Mr. Mulder?
So in the process of constructing the North Star Ford Arena, we want to put in security cameras and some network infrastructure to handle that. We will actually have the school district enter the agreement with Siteon and then we'll reimburse them for this expense. This was included in the soft cost budget that we have.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution 2024 dash two thirty-eight? Any public input on the resolution awarding a contract for security cameras for the North Star Ford Arena? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones. Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution 2024 dash two thirty-nine. Resolution approving change orders numbers seven, eight, and nine. K A change order number two for the North Star Ford Arena in the amount of two thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder?
So this is K A's second change order that was, is within their guaranteed maximum price. We had, did not have our bids for the joint sealant when they set the GMP, but they had a placeholder in there of a certain amount. They did get actual bids and it was considerably less than the placeholder we had of sixty-one thousand dollars less. So we are changing that, reducing that by sixty-one thousand. But we are going to add lighting along the pathway from the arena up to the high school parking lot. And then there was fifteen thousand and adding some bollards around the ice plant and just to protect those from stray vehicles or people backing into them or whatever. And so this change, the total change order is for twenty-six hundred dollars.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council?
Just comment, I think the added lighting is a good level of security for the path between here and the high school parking lot.
Any other comments? Hearing none, is there any public input on resolution 2024 dash two thirty-nine? Any public input on resolution approving change order numbers seven, eight, and nine for the North Star Ford Arena? Any public input on resolution 2024 dash two thirty-nine? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution 2024 dash two forty, resolution awarding contract for a new trailer for the wide area moor to witness trailer sales of Esco, Minnesota in the amount of twelve thousand three hundred dollars plus applicable taxes and fees. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Mr. Mulder?
So this is for a trailer in Public Works that was in the twenty twenty-four budget for the purpose of being able to transport the wide moor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Why plus applicable taxes?
That's just kind of the standard fee.
Standard language.
Standard line that we have. It's like in case that we missed a fee or something like that in the price.
And we have to buy license plates for it.
The invoice does reflect no tax payment.
Any other questions? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the resolution awarding the contract for a new trailer for the wide area moor to witness trailer sales? Is there any public input on resolution 2024 dash two forty? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. We're near the finish line, only two to go. Next is resolution 2024 dash two forty-one, resolution authorizing a summary of an ordinance of the city of Hermantown amending and restating section four oh five, sale of tetrahydrocannabinol products to regulate cannabis business. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. Mr. Mulder, this is allows the city to publish a summary instead of a whole ordinance?
Yeah, so it's simply publishing a summary of the, instead of five pages of the ordinance, we can just do a summary of it.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from council? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution 2024 dash two forty-one? Any public input on the resolution authorizing a summary of the ordinance and restated section four oh five? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones. Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution 2024 dash two forty-two. Resolution authorizing a summary of an ordinance amending chapter two, section two hundred definitions and chapter five, land use regulations to regulate cannabis businesses. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Jones to approve, second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder?
Same explanation of the previous resolution, just allowed us to print a summary.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution 2024 dash two forty-two? Any public input on resolution 2024 dash two forty-two? Any public input on the authorization to publish a summary of an ordinance? Roll call, please.
Councilor Geisler?
Aye.
Councilor Jelly?
Aye.
Councilor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Councilor Jones? Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next, we would entertain a motion to recess.
Move to recess.
Motion by Councilor LeBlanc. Is there a second? Second by Councilor Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you. See y'all in a couple of weeks.